I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, could we have roll call?
Craig Kershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Pollock.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Why did you say that?
Here.
You were all emailed a copy. Well, yes, you were all emailed, even.
No. I was off the list, actually.
You were on the list? Uh-oh. I'll have to check my.
Didn't you call me when you don't get them?
I just realized it, because I kept asking, did we get one?
You forgot to have them.
You need to put it on your list. Okay, most of you were emailing a copy of our June 20th minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about the agenda.
Oh.
I did get the minutes, because I responded to you.
Yes, you usually do. I'm saying.
Now that we know what we're talking about. I have a motion from Matt and a second from Craig to approve the minutes from June 20th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. Okay, first thing this evening, I want to welcome Scott Murray, our new fourth district city council member, to the council table this evening. And while his seat up here is only for a period of a year, I know he'll do a good job and contribute to all of our discussion and vote his conscience for the people of Decatur. So, welcome aboard, Scott.
Welcome.
Appreciate you stepping up. Also, I want to make a matter of record, Scott's oath of office that was given to him by Judge Chad Kukulhan on June 23rd of this year. If I could have.
So moved.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. To make this a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Okay, thank you. Melissa, tonight, our first thing up will be Melissa for a couple of different things. We have a short agenda again tonight, Bob.
Come on in.
Bob's.
Yep.
Bob's.
I've got a great kid. That one's good.
No, 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 no. First thing up is an update on the Decatur events.
We knew we were going to have to everybody to have to be flexible with their downtown events because of the construction. And so, with Madison Street between First and Second being closed for the demolition of the Schaefer Building, we were going to route detour traffic that way since that's closed.
Hold on, back up.
I'm sorry, let's start over.
Yeah, so that everybody knows, originally for Decatur, you were going to close Second Street.
Second Street in front of the courthouse and Madison Street between Second and Third.
Right.
We were going to have traffic detours off of Second onto Madison.
Going east.
Going east.
But that'll be closed because of construction.
As it's closed, we're basically just going to flop the event. Our stuff on Second Street will flop over to Third Street. Madison Street will stay the same. The map is the updated map in front of you. This has been submitted to Excise Police to update our floor plan layout. Because they are aware that.
Thus, Second Street will remain open.
Second Street will remain open, and we're asking Madison Street between Second and Third remain the same and to close Third Street.
Between Court.
Between Court and Monroe.
Correct. Greg, you almost had your hand up.
Well, as I said, it would be better to close at Jefferson since it's one-way indication right on Fourth Street.
That's fine with us, if that's fine with you.
Well, of course, you still have the alley beside Court to take control of.
People could access the library from parking lot Jefferson. The only other thing that they wouldn't be able to do is mail a letter, which they could do by.
And I guess we would have.
No, they could if you just pulled it off there.
But the thing is, yeah.
The way this is now, they can use the post office because you can go straight through the parking lot and access the alley.
And I guess we would like to leave that open because we would close at five o'clock in the morning on Saturday morning.
So I think that we'd just probably keep it the way.
Yeah, just close it on the wrong side of Court Street. You want to see it?
Yep. Good. Okay.
Just a request for a layout change, please.
Any other updates for Decatur before we?
Nope, tickets feel good, they're good, and we're looking forward to a good and safe event.
And the only way to purchase a ticket is online? Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Make a motion to grant. Looks approval.
Motion and a second to grant the Decatur the Decatur update to their layout. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same, thank you. Second thing then, Melissa, is Decatur Main Street sidewalk sale event. Are you covering that or is Riley?
I've got that. I have Riley to speak to it also. Their event forming again and thinking about being flexible, this is what they've requested.
And when is the sidewalk sale?
Close July, Saturday, July 15th.
It's coming up?
Yes.
Okay.
They would like to close Second Street from Jefferson to Monroe and then Monroe to Jackson and leave the intersection open. And then Madison Street from Second to Third.
Hold on. Madison Street from Second to Third.
And Court Street from Second to the alley from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay, Second Street from Jefferson to Monroe. And then also from Monroe to Jackson, leaving the intersection out here east-west.
The same as last year, correct?
Same as last year, yes.
Okay. Do they fill out an event form?
Yes, and I have it. And again, thinking about being flexible with construction and everything, nothing is signed yet for that reason. We wanted to make sure that those streets were okay first before having it signed.
Jeremy, you okay with that, the street closings?
Sure.
Sure.
We're just.
Well, you're hard to get along with. Okay, well, same as last year, last year worked.
And I believe will still be closed out here. Monroe Street will still be closed during that time. It'll be open yet, correct?
Correct. On July 15th, it'll still be just like it is now. Okay, Adam, did I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this event as well.
Okay. Second. Oh, man, that's not a half Scott's second. Got a motion and a second over here, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to get you in.
All right. Jeremy and anybody else who wants to participate in this, next thing I have up is update on various city projects. And I guess we could almost just kind of call this.
We're in a world where you start.
With that sign that they're going to put outside my office.
Where do you start?
Okay, hold on, I'll kind of, I'll kind of, I'll kind of be Jiff if I could. Let's start with the pounding sound that came from right outside my office today.
That would be my fault.
Okay.
And you stayed awake, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Bill's probably even heard it.
And she wasn't even here, she was home.
Anyway, the project Ken is talking about is the sidewalk street scape project out here on Monroe Street. That is progressing very nicely. Hitchcock Concrete came in about two weeks ago. You've been here two weeks, haven't you? And got started on that project. What we're calling Phase One, which is the first block, has been completed, which is the bridge from First Street. Other than the lighting, the decorative street lights, which the lighting poles came in on Thursday and Friday. Last week, Larry. I just think with that, I think it's going to shoot like those ones. And resurfacing and re-caving on First Street from kind of our improvements in the sewer project from Monroe to Jackson will start on Friday.
This Friday?
And then be completed sometime in the first of Friday next week.
Terrific.
We're going to keep working away as long as the funds keep holding out. And I bet you don't see a huge improvement whatsoever all the way down to Brumers. Questions on that?
Looking good. Looks really good.
Next thing, let's talk about, we just had the groundbreaking for the nature preserve. Don, I think you're going to head that up.
Yeah, the schedule is to start next week on that. Harlow is hoping to get in this week and do the clearing. Didn't get the chance to call in today.
He deserved it.
Might be there the next few days, either today that started, so yeah, their work starts next week.
And that anticipated timeframe to complete that is 45 to 60 days, is that right, I think?
Straight up 45.
Yep, yep.
Only if it doesn't go underwater.
Yeah. Don, don't talk like that.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, obviously we had a groundbreaking last week. We'd also like to get everyone back together. Probably more people involved, more actual ribbon cutting will we do open it up. It's been a lot of people standing bald behind the scenes. They really need some recognition on this project.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, Scott, you can help us out when it comes time for the.
Coverage.
The ribbon cutting and getting us some coverage on that.
We'll give you first dibs on that.
Oh, thanks.
How about this building back over here? This big brick building, I see there's a few less windows over there.
Yeah, the damn kids keep shooting them out. Actually, the environmental work started last Monday on that. All the windows basically have to come out of that building of the glass, if you will, and all of the glazing around the windows. And then there's a little bit of material inside the building that has to come out. I believe that work has been completed near just down to the windows. I did talk with Greg Fleming this morning and environmental firm. We are still on track for demo on Monday. Once the demolition does start on Monday, Madison Street from First to Second will be closed due to safety concerns. And First Street will be closed from Monroe to Madison, more so right up near the building. You're still be able to get up to this parking lot out here and a couple of businesses up there. During demolition, I know there's going to be a lot of sightseers, but you know, obey my defense and such. And just keep a, keep a safe distance during demolition.
Speaking of sightseers, Melissa has been asked, and I have been asked by individuals, can I get a brick from there? I don't know if we could ask Fleming to put a pile of bricks across the street for people to pick out or something. I don't know.
There have been a few getting bricks. As later as it gets in the week, we're just going to have to tell them that they're going to have to wait until demolition time.
Okay, but I mean, once the demo's done, we can get a pile of bricks away from the job site that people could pick out a brick if they want. I don't know why for sure they want them, but they.
They've been falling into the alley for years.
And you could have been selling those, Matt.
The majority of, the majority of the requests I've been getting for bricks has been the business owners for the facade program. It's the masons have been coming around looking at the front of these buildings to tuck for them. And they went matched a lot of those bricks.
Ah, yeah. That would be.
On that current building. Well, also this outside, so that's what we're starting to get out of our calls from.
Okay.
From a lot of the downtown merchants. The building owners wanting eight or 10 or 12 bricks, you know, for their.
Replacement.
Sure.
Well, I know an alley over here that we're going to work on where they could put a few.
And then, you know, I have been working with digs. They will have a site plan soon for what they're going to do on that property for review.
Okay.
Once the building is down and everything's back filming.
This past weekend, Main Street put a couple of pictures of how it looks right now on Facebook. It got like, today Mimex had like 26 hits or so, all pretty positive. One did question why it's not being turned into lots, but, but other than that, it was all positive.
We're taking a quick tour.
I know, exactly. Yeah.
I made it about 30 feet in and said, okay, I think it's not going.
Yeah, it's scary. Very bad.
You know, I do have to say that the public's been relatively patient the last several months. We haven't had a lot tore up. There have been some fish shaken out as they're going by, but you know, it's progress. You know, we're all wanting to make things nicer for the city. And you have to have some.
We're getting there.
Disruption to make progress and to make things nicer.
Right. Last night, over at the fireworks, I talked to a few people about that very same thing. For the most part, they're very understanding. They just kind of wish it was done, but understand what's going on.
Backing up to the Monroe Street streetscaping, will all the streetlights go up at the same time? Are you going to put some up over Phase One sometime here?
It all depends on AEP's schedule. Because AEP needs to put, set a couple meter bases for us. Inspections have been done. Orders went out to the underground companies. Basically, they have to go out of meter base, underground, straight up pole to make their connection. It's very simple. They're just about two to three weeks backlog.
Okay.
Now, in this phase, we're going to feed it out of this building, out of the basement, so you know. It could happen really, really soon. I did speak with Tom Rourke on Friday, and he's hoping by the end of this week or first part of next week, they can start pulling the wire on existing bases that we have ready. More than likely put the poles up because the poles are going to have to go up before AEP will power anyhow.
And then, my last question on the streetscaping is, Don and yourself and I, we talked today. Are you going to continue on this, on the south side of the street?
Yeah.
So when the area between First and Second is done out here, they're not going to go across the street? They're going to go west and do the south side of Monroe Street from Founder's Park area down to Two Brothers, correct?
Correct, because once we get on the north side of the street, there is some additional work that's going to need to be done on some water, water services and such that are going to have to be changed out. And then also, there's quite a bit of remodeling going on on the north side in this block that we need to give contractors a little time to get a lot of their demolition done so they're not dragging stuff back out on the new sidewalks and parking on sidewalks and such. Just, we have plenty to do. We're just trying to work with those people. So we don't inconvenience them. But in the end, once we switch to the other sides, it's going to go very quick.
Next Madison Street project, but I haven't really talked to Kevin lately about it, have you, Melissa?
The advertisement for bed will go in the paper next Monday. And the pre-bid meeting is July 20th.
July 20th, pre-bid. Okay. Anything else to report on Madison Street? Okay. Master Drive.
The water main is, the main line is in. They're doing connections today and tomorrow. The plan is to pressurize it and test for pressure at least yet this week. So if that happens, then coordination would be Monday, Tuesday next week. So tap connection should start Monday next week.
So tap connections start a week from now?
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Providing all the purification.
And approximately, I mean, I know there's no way of knowing about how long, there's a lot of tap connections.
There's a lot.
A lot of houses on that street.
That's probably.
That could take a while.
Two, three weeks.
Two to three weeks for all the tap.
Three weeks, actually.
So that's pretty much taking up the rest of July and maybe even into early August.
Late August.
And when that's done, and then we got new wire flowing down that street, the next thing is the approaches for the driveways? Is that correct?
Curb's are scheduled for the second week in August. Driveway approach is to be about the third week in August. Now, we're at about three weeks. So we're looking probably right after Labor Day to have it completed project.
With a couple of new streetlights added to what's already there, plus paving. So Labor Day, Master Drive people can have a big party, a street party.
If not Labor Day right after.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say it a lot much later, but.
Well, thank you, people of Master Drive, for your patience. They've had a mess all summer long, and they really have.
It's coming.
It's going to be worth it, I think, once all's said and done.
I think with the rain it has, it didn't have any flooding.
Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely had a Mother Nature structure in there that proven that this is going to work.
It is working, yeah, the new store.
Taken care of.
What else?
I think that's enough.
I have more. I got more questions. For the sake of the public, again.
Phase two is second, first to second.
Where's two second?
Yeah. How far is that? Second to Third. Second to Third, I think. Be Phase Three, basically. Well, so we don't confuse everyone. We just call it Phase One, Two, and Three. We're actually going on.
I'll tell you about that later. First Street out here from Jackson to Second, at some point in time, that'll be resurfaced with all the, I mean, there's a lot of patches in there now. Is that not getting resurfaced?
Jackson to Second.
From Jackson to Monroe.
That's paving that starts Friday.
That starts Friday, okay.
That we know that we talked about.
And then from.
Paving on.
Okay, it's bad. Right now, it's bad, yeah. Okay, good, good to hear that.
That is part of the sewer project. We have not, I have about a hundred, or we have about 100 feet that's not included in there that's not going to pay out of our annual paving budget because it's completely distributed.
Yep, yep. Okay, I don't think.
And that will have also the decorative lighting on that, on that inspection street. So the sidewalks, decorative lighting.
Facade project.
And water services.
Okay. Another project, facade program. Everybody been notified, Melissa? Some happy business owners? Good. Yep. And we awarded how much this year, six?
Seventy-one thousand dollars.
Great program. Okay. You two have anything else?
I got a question.
Great.
Do we have to make a decision on council about that thing for this grant?
Community crossings?
Yes.
I did say bring that up, didn't I? Yeah. While you're here, let's talk about community crossings. Community crossings for the benefit of the media. Last year was something, it was put on by Endot, and it was a way for a community or a county to apply for up to a million dollars of street or road renovations, up to a million dollars. And last year, it was a 50-50 match, okay? We didn't have $500,000 to put toward a million dollars' worth of work. Plus, the buy-in wasn't the best. This year, for municipalities under $10,000, they've changed the rules, and Decatur would qualify because we're under $10,000. And we could apply for up to a million dollars, and it would be at a 75-25 match. We would only have to pay 25%. And during the Board of Works meeting, we discussed a little bit about what we would, what we would want to go in to do and how we would decide what streets to do or where to spend the money. And with that, Jeremy, I'll let you go ahead and kind of throw out some of the.
Okay, well, along with this program, Endot requires, say, phaser training. It basically, it's a road rating system that you go around and rate your roadways, identify drainage issues, utility issues, fork payment and such. But that has been completed. It's been set to, don't tap any of the requirements to apply for these grants. But with this money, you can do, like, crack ceiling jobs, resurface work, repaving. Sidewalks, as long as you're paving the street, you know, you can't do just standalone sidewalk work. We've had a few areas that we've been kind of pizzaing at the last several years. For example, Winchester Street from Legion Park to Lyman Street. You know, that, that was a project we went after and backed it to late in the night for era funds. We were next in line for the era stimulus funds, and they ran out of money, so we was not awarded that. But there's a lot of different projects, you know, that could be included in this. We just need to sit down, Ken and I and Don and whomever else and kind of determine, you know, which we think would be the better group of projects. Make a list, apply for the money, and look for the best. If we apply for the money, we should know about the third week in August if we are awarded any or no money whatsoever.
Yep, and we don't necessarily need to decide that this evening, but it would be nice, since the end of the application parade is the 15th, and we won't meet again until the 15th. No, excuse me, the 18th. Because, yeah, we wouldn't make it. What would be nice to have is the discussion from council as to how much we would like to set aside in our budget for next year and where we would want to take that money from to go into this. We want to go in full bore for the million-dollar request? If so, we need $250,000 set aside from somewhere. I think the question was posed to you, did you have money set aside for paving next year? And you said yes, and you had $280,000 set aside for paving. And then the next question was, well, could we use your money you had set aside as our 25% match? Seems pretty easy. Now, while that seems easy, it gets a little more difficult because as Jeremy has to select where we spend the money. For example, Bob, your street, okay, Mix, needs paved. But we need to do infrastructure work under the street before we can pave it. So it's not just as, just not as easy as just going out and paving the worst streets because there's more work that needs to be done. And do we have the money to fund that? So some of the, some of the worst streets So, some of the, some of the worst streets may not be included in the community crossings fund, we may have to drop back ten and punt, you know?
Now we've got worse pieces of old Master Drive.
Mm-hmm, yeah, all the traffic, yeah, yeah. So.
Can you use any of that money for patching? Maintenance, you said, I do have some maintenance money, some patching money set aside in our area.
It can be used for ADA compliance on the intersections, you know, we have a plan where we're doing so many a year, we could nip out a few more of those, but it seems like every time we do them, something happens, and I can't see doing any more per year than we have to personally.
We're to the point now, we do overpay them, and that's what's required by the state.
Yeah.
I'd say go for the whole million, if you can make a good enough application, don't, I guess don't throw them in there to get to a million and make the application work.
Very well said, well said.
So, if you can get a million, get a million, if not.
Probably, probably one of the cool things about this is we would have eighteen months to close out the project, so we're spending money, so, you know, if we decided that, you know, next year's, we couldn't do the whole two fifty.
We have eighteen months.
You would have eighteen months if they are.
So we can budget some of this in our eighteen, this is for eighteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Correct.
And some can be budgeted into nineteen, yes, so.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to.
Set aside, go for it, the maximum, up to the maximum, if Jeremy, if sees it necessary, you know, if it can worthwhile, use that much, yes. A motion.
I'll second it.
Scott made his first.
Second from over here. My first order.
The whistle.
Thank you very much, we'll get working on that.
Okay.
Is there a vote on it?
How about all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same, thank you. Well, you two are done with your department head stuff then, right, as far as reporting? Greg, do you have anything?
I do, thank you.
Mr. Hitchcock or Les?
No, our completed project is out back, so after council adjourned, if you'd like to come out and see our latest project.
Ah, ah-huh, yep.
It's out back.
Okay.
Kurt? I did submit an application to FEMA for one plane man, I'm waiting for them to respond.
Yes, I think I signed that, yes, I did, yeah. Bill, you have anything?
I don't.
Ann?
No.
Melissa?
Tickets are on sale starting today for Decatur guys in cash. The ballgame is on Saturday, August twelfth, the seven oh five first pitch, tickets are seven dollars, and thanks to some wonderful community sponsors, each ticket will come with five dollars in tin cash to spend on hot dog or on a t-shirt, so it's a great deal for your family for ballgame tickets off the Riverfront Center, we think they'll go back, so heat your ticket.
We have up to four hundred thirty-eight tickets, all in one section, in the nice shaded area along third base, and, yeah, it's basically, I mean, two dollars a person, so take your family and go up there, and then the kids get to buy something while they're there, so, I mean, it's seven dollars, but you get five back with the tin cash, so that'll be neat. It was fun last year, wouldn't it? Scott's son Griffin got to throw out the first pitch, well, I assume we're probably going to do that again.
Confirming that.
Yeah, we'll confirm that, yeah, we had a drawing last year to see who's going, you know, everybody who bought a ticket, their name was put in for throwing out the first pitch, and Griffin got to throw out the first pitch, that's pretty cool.
They picked my dad, he can't throw that far.
Yeah, grandpa gave it to Griffin, yeah, that was good. Any other department heads, I don't see any comments, mayor's report, I want to take a moment and thank Adam Agia for twenty-five years of raising the funds and doing all the organizing to put on a fireworks display here in our community. Adam has said that he will not be doing that anymore, and he will be open to hearing from anyone who wants to volunteer, I don't think just anyone can do this, I mean, you have to be a good fundraiser, a good organizer, and a good communicator to be able to pull it off, and it'd be nice to see some organization here in town that has, you know, a group of men, I'm not saying I'm not going to point any fingers, but if a service club, or a sorority, or anyone would want to take this on, it would be something to pick up on, and I think would be worthwhile. But I want to thank specifically Mike Mahan, Greg was out of town, so Mike Mahan, and a couple of the reserve officers that were there helping Mike, and Les Markle, and some of the county deputies that were there, Les pretty much took charge last night, our biggest fear was the fact that Jackson Street was open while, I'm going to guess, a couple thousand people were there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was, there was a big crowd, and Jackson Street was open the entire time, except for we closed it ten minutes before the fireworks, and then opened it back up about fifteen minutes after the fireworks, and for the most part, the crowd cooperated crossing the street, we did have a few mad dashers, but they looked both ways before they crossed, and Les did a good job setting everything up as far as crosswalks goes, and just really want to thank him and Mike Mahan, and Dan Strickler's in one of the reserves, and Eric, what's his last name?
Stockman.
Stockman, yeah, those two. Dan Strickler told me he's been a reserve for, I think, thirty-eight years, that's something that's to be commended. So, yeah, thank you for having a safe Fourth of July. Phase three of the Endot project, we didn't really touch on that, will not take place until the week of July twenty-fourth, will be just like we are now, where Jackson Street is open, Monroe Street going into Stratton, and East Monroe Street will be, those two intersections will remain closed. Endot has shared with me this morning that right now, the anticipated time to go into phase three will be the week of July twenty-fourth sometime. When that happens, Jackson Street closes, East Monroe Street opens back up, Stratton opens back up, and East Monroe Street will become the big area of travel, that's going to be how everyone gets to school, both high school and middle school, everyone's going to be going out East Monroe Street, so it just switches from Jackson to East Monroe, and the fun continues until October. That's everything I had on the mayor's report, how about council members, do you have anything?
We got a summer concert series tomorrow night.
Absolutely.
In fact, we've got a warm-up band of this kid down in Burn named Gabe Bailey in Rocksteady, we've got them planned for coming off at five-thirty, and then we've got a lot of amount of soup that's planning on going off around seven-ish.
Okay. And the concert series have been a big success thus far, and hopefully we'll have some more decent weather tomorrow night and have another good crowd. Anything from this side over here?
July thirteenth, there're WPTAs coming down for interview, and on their program.
What's that called, the?
Life Better.
Is that called? No.
Insight?
Insight, it's on at twelve-thirty in the afternoon, and there'll be four, four-minute segments featuring different things of Decatur, Decatur Main Street's going to take a four-minute segment, Decatur Chamber's going to take a four-minute segment, the city of Decatur's going to take a four-minute segment. The fourth segment will either be the city of Decatur most likely, or, I'm waiting to hear back from the sculpture tour personnel, they may, the sculpture tour may take a segment. So we'll have the entire half hour program on insight on, they're filming it the thirteenth, it'll be done a little later, I can't remember the date.
A week later.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to report, mayor, we have, every year, we have more people visiting the sculpture tour, walking, visiting businesses, going to restaurants, and it's nice to see it, it really is, they've taken to this next level, I think, and it's really cool to see how many people.
Every day, you see people are in town enjoying the sculpture tour.
Counted people just walking up and down the street, as I went down Second Street, there were thirty-two people walking up and down looking at the sculpture.
Seriously?
Yep, it was by a group of five or six groups.
I was invited last week, this is not really necessary to say, but I was invited over to the Boys and Girls Club, the Boys and Girls Club took all the kids on a, on sculpture tour, and then they took the kids back and invited them to create sculptures, and then, so then they called me and asked me to come over and view their sculptures, and I was totally amazed, these kids, I bet they made at least fifty sculptures, and they used Legos, they used dominoes, they used wood blocks, they used little plastic pipes, I mean, they had all kinds of futuristic things built, and each kid got to tell me about their project and why they, it was just, it was awesome, so, a lot of fun.
Just got a quick question.
Yep.
The feasibility study for the riverfront and the pool and the faithful dominoes, are they getting close to getting those done, or do we know where they're at?
Yeah, the feasibility study was only on the pool, we put twenty-five thousand dollars in to do the feasibility study on the aquatics park, and that's coming along well, we're kind of at a point now where, as I think I shared with you earlier today, that we had, during the feasibility study, everyone, Jeremy helped me out, it was some people from the park board, some people from the swim club, parents, it was just a group of citizens that were, that would be interested in on the aquatics park, plus the park board, and they all met, and gentlemen from HWC would just kind of show all the different things that could happen at an aquatics park, like a playground in the middle of a low-level water area, a diving board, slides, a lap, six-lane lap pool, a lot of different, a lot of different things, okay, a toddler area, and from that, he asked the feasibility group to select what items they felt they would like to have, and they did that, and then HWC, we met again at a later date, and he came in with a rendition of what that would look like, and how much it would cost, and everyone had a real hard swallow after they saw how much it was going to cost, and, because we basically had everything under the sun in there, and that's kind of where we're at now, is to kind of decide what we want to take out of there to get the cost down to something that's more affordable. A year ago, when Jeremy and I went down and looked at Portland's, they built theirs for three and a half million, and the estimate that this guy gave us was, you know, closer to the five million plus figure, so we need to take some things out of it, make it more affordable, still have to determine a site to put it on, so that's kind of where we're at on that. As for Han and Upman and Riverfront, we've not spent any money, we do have a preliminary drawing from, what's Brett's firm's name?
Miller Wayne's survey.
Yeah.
We're basically, we're on the home stretch on that project, with ballgames and stuff getting started, some of the members that are serving on that board, they've got extremely busy, we're to the point now that we're going to make a trip to Monroe, to the ballpark of the facility down there, and just take a real good heart with what they have. Brett was very involved with that project, all the way from the fog till opening day, and he's still very involved in that project, so he has a lot of insights of what worked and what did not work, and probably what they could do would have been different. That's where we're at on that, that project is, you know, everyone visually seeing what we're talking about, and finally put it on paper and say, this what we want, this what the estimate is, I would think we're probably about two meetings away from having that completed.
And then in the Riverfront, I'm sorry, we did spend, I think it was twelve thousand five hundred for JPR to work up some plans on First Street, we have not, we've looked at those plans, they were just an initial idea, we've not decided anything whatsoever. We would like to hear more from over at the house over here on the corner to see if that might be available, still waiting to hear on that. So, no, we've not done anything more than that, now where are we? Ask for a capital campaign?
Well, I guess I would just like to, we did spend money for reports or them to do, do we get a report on what they've done, or is it just coming?
On First, on the Riverfront?
Yeah, on all the projects.
If you want a report to come here, we're not really ready for that yet, I don't think, I think that was with JPR, he came in with a board and just kind of showed us different things we could do, and this was again on, who was all, I don't even know who all was in that meeting.
Who was there?
Tim was there.
I know.
Jeremy, were you there?
Jeremy was there.
I don't know, there was Hannah, six of us maybe during the day, if you would like him to come present that here, I can have him, but I don't, personally, I don't think we're there.
I don't see you have to come present it.
Yeah, we got drawings.
The drawings are a study, what, information on what he's come up with so far, if we're paying.
I can have that to you tomorrow, because I got the thing on Amy I have.
Kind of any of the facilities that like to see what's going on.
Yeah, I think the.
I'll need a presentation, if I can do some kind of information.
Yeah, I know the redevelopment commission is paying for the Riverfront study, and they've had some claims submitted, but not a lot, so I don't think they've got a lot of time in it at this point.
They haven't, they've been more focused on Madison Street, same company.
Also, what is the status, we had set aside fifty thousand for marketing, where is that?
Well, before I get to that, let's back up one more little bit, and can we briefly talk patronicity? Melissa, you think, okay, the last one hundred thousand dollars for Madison Street, we're going to get that through IHCD, through a program called Patronicity, and that will go live.
Hopefully later this month.
Yeah, it will. We're putting together all of our marketing for that right now, we just, Drew Derengaski is finishing up a video that he's making to endorse this, it'll be done through a webpage, similar to a GoFundMe webpage, only this is a Patronicity webpage, and it, we'll market the dickens out of this thing, to get people to look at that webpage and buy into what we're doing at Madison Street, and for every dollar that people will donate, IHCD is going to give us, Patronicity is going to give us a dollar back, so if I give five dollars, it's going to turn into ten dollars, so we raise fifty thousand, they'll give us fifty thousand, and that's the max, it's fifty. I talked to the mayor of Warsaw last week, and they went for the fifty thousand dollar match, and they got the fifty thousand from Patronicity, and they raised fifty-seven thousand themselves, so that's the next fundraiser that we'll actually have affecting the community. Then we have the capital campaign, which was the fifty thousand dollars we set aside to do a marketing campaign, and Melissa and Cam Collier and I met, and we discussed this, and it's more than just the capital campaign, more just a marketing strategy on how to market Decatur.
Right, that's what I thought, that's what we.
Yeah.
Put that to work.
No, it's kind of a, it's also to do a capital campaign to.
Well, but to market Decatur.
Right.
To support.
Everything we're doing.
The reason for, yes.
Right, and we're not, we're not ready to do it yet, but we have every intention to do it yet this year, you know, it'll be, it'll be probably a late third quarter, I'm guessing, maybe, before we'll be ready to kick that out, so for now, watch for the Patronicity and get ready to write a little check if you could. Other questions? Bob, I'm sorry, man, I thought this was going to be a half an hour, and I heard it's coming up on an hour, we started late though, it's only been fifty minutes. Any other comments from council? I guess I still have Phyllis and Tim, Phyllis?
Yeah.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Come on, Tim.
Yep.
All right.
Everybody wants to get out of here.
If that's the case, then we might want to prove some claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
One of you have to second it, or one of you?
Tyler.
Tyler wasn't here.
I'll second it.
Okay, Wiley seconds that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Right.
And a second from Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same, thank you, we are adjourned.